Nice meeting. And so I am happy to do that. So this work session of the Board of Education for February 15th, 2022 is called The Order. The material has been posted on the PPS website under the Board of Meetings tabs. The meeting is being live, streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. So good evening and welcome to those joining us tonight in this work session to hear from staff. An update on the Southeast Guiding Coalition. Tonight, we're going to be getting an overview of the work of the SEGC today, and we're going to hear what recommendations they have so far. And I believe Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz is going to get us started.
Yes, I've got a team of folks to talk things through with you tonight. So let me start with introductions. I'm Claire Hertz, Deputy Superintendent and Executive Sponsor of the Southeast Guiding Coalition Process. And with me, we have Dr. Esther Oma Bay and Regional Superintendent of Elementary Programs. And then next to her is Margaret Calvert, Regional Superintendent of Secondary Programs, who are working with K5s and K8s. And then we have Ms. Denise Clark, Director of Community Engagement. And next on her left is Beth Kavanaugh, one of our Southeast Guiding Coalition Co-Chairs. And then we have Judy Brennan, who is our Director of Enrollment and Transfer. And then we have virtually Karina Ruiz from Brick Architects. And then Adrielle Person, our second SEGC Co-Chair with us tonight. So some of them will be, have some things to present to you. Their private presentation and others are here to help with responding to questions as we go through this process tonight. So we've had parents, principals, and community members working together for two years in the southeast Portland, working on enrollment program balancing. Last year, the board approved Phase One with Kellogg Boundaries in place for the start of fall this past year. So now we are bringing, working on Phase Two, the final phase, and getting to the end of the process. And we want to give you, go to the next slide. We'll be giving you an update on the latest proposal that's come out of the Southeast Guiding Coalition. And we will give you an opportunity for asking questions, for understanding. And then hold a board discussion, asking you two questions. What do you need to prepare for the final SEGC recommendation? And what advice do you have for the Southeast Guiding Coalition as they finalize their proposal? So with that, I will turn it over to Esther, Dr. Oma.
Good evening and long time. Thank you so much for being here. I am going to begin by reading our land acknowledgement and anti-oppression statement. At PPS, we strive to strengthen our relationships with the Native community and Native nations. As symbol of this commitment, we land acknowledgement. These statements bring visibility to the peoples of our collective home. This statement is meant to provide information and context, while also encouraging all of us to reflect on our current day relationship with Native people and Native experiences. We acknowledge that we live well and play on the traditional land of the Shina, Plaquemines, Calafoya, Albuama, Waskel, Catalin, Twalatin, and Malala peoples. We also know that many other tribes may their wings along the Columbia and Willamette rivers. We honor their history and acknowledge the sacrifices they made. Let us also acknowledge that we are presently federally recognized tribes of this area, the Grand Ros, the Celest, and the Cowlets. In addition, I'd like to acknowledge the Shina Nation, who has been seeking federal recognition for many years. The urban Indian community is made up of tribal diversity that originates from around the country, representing 400 tribes. The urban Indian community has a vivid history made up of people whose journeys have brought them to Portland via ways of forced displacement or seeking more opportunities, exile reasons. Today, these tribes and communities celebrate their heritage, show resilience and tenacity that will be greatly admired by their ancestors. Within 405 schools today, we serve students and families representing more than 150 tribal nations within our education system. It is our obligation to teach accurate information, have some presence, about the impact of colonization on our students. All students today are invisible, the multitude of Native families and many diverse ways Native communities and families are living in the present. We encourage every person to reflect on their own history, understand the history of colonization on their side, and support indigenous sovereignty, priorities, and actions. This acknowledgement is one step that we can take to improve our support of indigenous communities in the area. In addition, in addition to acknowledging the land and those that have been here since nine began, it must also remember our stolen servants from Africa, who's the root of the past law of this country. These two communities and atrocities committed against them. I intensely intend to find new targets, says within our white services to world. Everything we have is due to stolen land and stolen labor. And every system and constitution that impacts our lives is built around this legacy. It is our job to speak to actions into spaces so we can begin to hear. So the Phase Two board charge was for us to convert Harrison Park, which is currently located, into middle school, which means we're going to find a home for the K5 students at Harrison Park. We were also charged with increasing the enrollment numbers at the middle school. So that said, we started looking at what we needed to do to ensure that we are able to meet these needs. The next slide, they'll show you the number of schools that are impacted currently. Not all of them are impacted in the same way. Some of them are tangentially impacted and some of them are impacted largely. So as we have our conversations tonight, we'll get into a little bit about what we've looked at, the reasons we've made certain decisions, the communities we've involved, our principals as inspection leaders, their input, the input of students, and the various stakeholders that have participated in this conversation so far. As that membership, of course, has been the school, the office of school performance, our community engagement office, our enrollment and transfer office, facilities planning, transportation, special education, office of teaching and learning, and early learning as well. We determined from the very beginning that we were going to follow a decision-making framework that would enable us to reach as many people as possible, gather as much information as possible from as many stakeholders as would listen to us. We are also aware that there were some people that may not come to our meetings, who probably not log onto the computers. So how do we get their voices and how do we have a representation? So we looked at the scope of the work that we had to do, and we were very strategic in finding ways to meet these different needs. So the decision-making framework, of course, included us using our modified consensus making to develop a recommendation to, that will go to the Deputy Superintendent. The Southeast Guiding Coalition, we use the first of my consensus. We also decided to build methods of reaching consensus. This evening, we'll hear from flu analytics and brick architecture of them. They'll explain the process to us as we go through the different phases. That said, I will yield the opportunity, Shanice.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to walk us through a little bit of our engagement process and how that's really played a role into the Southeast Guiding Coalition's work. So it was really critical to have a process where our most impacted communities, especially those who are closest to the decisions being made, have the access to elevate their voices in this process. And so we really designed the engagement process to achieve that. And we really had the work and partnership of many folks along the way to address challenges and barriers that we have come across. But with the help of our PPS team, we designed an initial process that really began with hearing and understanding our goals and our charter. But we were able to really further solidify this and have the ideas for, yes, have the ideas and inputs of specific communities play a role into what we learned and developed into the brainstorm and testing phase. And so that really created a space for a race-based affinity model to really set the stage for how input would be brought back to the SEGC in addition to our district-wide opportunities and bringing that action and accountability to the ideas that we hear from our stakeholders. And so in keeping that commitment, especially to racial equity and social justice, we really wanted to have this process designed where that district-wide space would have folks provide specific input on the scenarios being developed. And that as a result, we were able to really bring that back to the Southeast Guiding Coalition, where they help review those, that feedback, and discover themes and new information that's being received, and also identify who we are missing and who we weren't hearing from. And so we went back to community and also want to acknowledge that, you know, the pandemic and the impact to schools, students, and families, I think definitely played a role in how engagement opportunities, the volume of voices we were able to hear. So it was important for us to also look at our methods. And then we went back and had direct, one-to-one conversations with families. So from focus groups to phone banking to text banking, to school-based opportunities, really with a partnership of principals, really playing a big, playing a big role here. So just want to acknowledge the comprehensive kind of process and methods that we use. But we could go to the next slide and it will unpack the key community groups at different times of this process. But really in September, we had opportunities at Lane, Harrison Park, Creative Science, and communities impacted overall in the southeast to have input on the process. And that was for multilingual, specific spaces, spaces for students. In addition, we had spaces for folks of color and proceeded to do that in December when we further ironed out defined scenarios as a result of doing that brainstorming and forecasting work. And had also input from key staff groups that were impacted by the process as well. And we're also able to hear from our Southeast Guiding Coalition in groups or schools that we need to go back and reach. And so that, some of those schools included Lent, Bridger, Harrison Park, and Marysville. And so we are able to partner with those principals and a lot more to hear the feedback from folks. And so you can go to the next slide where we're going to get some takeaways. Well, there's also an engagement report. Yes, there you go. There's some takeaways, I think, that represent some of what you will see in the engagement report. But we were really able to hear as a result of this work, some key things. That includes middle school consolidation being something that's welcomed by families. But there's definitely acknowledgement that there's a, there's limited spaces or locations for programs as well. And so there is also a need to have more understanding for transportation accessibility and what that means as a result of this process and how that will be affected by various schools. And so it's also a large concern that we have schools that might not be impacted, that represent communities or that have communities that are more affluent. And so that's definitely something that has been named in the process that affluent communities have, might not be impacted in the same ways. And so folks are wrestling with, you know, how that shapes up in the scenarios. Also, there's also an acknowledgement that there is a high school process, you know, that's next. But folks are also, I think, interested in learning the results of that information to make sense too of how Phase Two could impact them and their students. And so that also, of course, represented the feedback. And there's also just a recognition that the day-to-day lives of families may be shifted by the process. And so folks are wrestling with that. But a few more points here is that the whole school model, the whole school dual-language immersion model is something that could be welcomed by more families and more communities, especially if the diversity of the population of that student, of students in that school is maintained. I think that's something that's important in a lot of co-located programs that exist now. And I think more, as we go along here, as we talk about dual-language immersion programs, that that's also represented having various identities in the programs as well. And so kind of talking about how diversity of students and the identities of students do vary at both programs, I think, is something we could continue to talk about. And there is a support of a whole school dual-language immersion program at Lent. So that is present. And there is support as well for dual-language immersion programs, especially the ones at Harrison Park remaining. And also Creative Science School. And families, we are able to hear from at Bridger did share, they would welcome, we would welcome a Creative Science School at Bridger. So those are some, I think, highlights that are represented also in the engagement report that really goes into full depth of what we heard from folks in each of these stages as well. I think we could go to the next slide and I think that might be Karina.
Yes, thank you, Shanice. So what we did in terms of the progression of the Southeast Guiding Coalition is really work on unpacking a lot of the issues associated primarily with program placement. And spent a good deal of time in the fall and then early 2022, talking about that. And we reached consensus, the SEGC reached consensus in early January on a few key decisions. The first is that Clark will become the new location for Harrison Park's elementary neighborhood and the Chinese DLI program that currently exists at Harrison Park. As Shanice was saying, strong support from the Bridger neighborhood to have a Creative Science join them. Oh, well, did the presentation go away on your end as well? And then also that Chinese DLI and neighborhood co-location will continue at Woodstock. There was a strong feeling that the support of that program for it to remain intact. And that the elementary DLI program strands will join up at middle school with one language per middle school. So both the idea of bringing multiple strands together at the middle school level, but then also ensuring that the middle schools were one language specific. So you weren't trying to bring multiple language and DLI programs into a single middle school. So those are the pieces that were, that we arrived at consensus the earliest, right? So that happened in January. And then next slide. So then in early February, so the work then began to really kind of figure out what were the remaining pieces of program placement that needed to be resolved. And at the February 3rd SEGC meeting, a majority of SEGC members agreed to move forward with the consideration of these remaining program placements. So the first was that elementary school Spanish immersion would remain at Atkinson and Lent, and the Bridger program would move to Lent, creating a whole school dual-language immersion school. The Lent neighborhood program would phase out and future students would have the opportunity to enroll in Spanish immersion at Lent or at Marysville. The middle school Spanish immersion would consolidate at Kellogg, adding a strand that is currently located at Mount Tabor Middle School. And the middle school Chinese or Mandarin immersion program would consolidate at Harrison Park, including two strands currently located at Hosford. So those are the sort of program consensus, program placement consensus or majority that we had moving into that. So I believe we will be going to Judy now to talk a little bit about where we've gone since that February 30th.
Thank you, Karina. So what I'd like to do is just give you a little bit more of the technical details. Not going to go into a lot of them. We're here to support you if you have any follow-up questions. So as you heard, the Coalition has been grappling both with these really important program placement decisions and setting up the elementary and middle schools in the region to be successful. The supplemental goal was to have middle schools with no fewer than 500 students in them. And like right now, Lane Middle School has 363. Right now, Harrison Park, it's a K8, but there's only 205 middle grades kids in there. So there's hundreds of middle grade students that have to shift in order to achieve those goals that you had set out for the Coalition in charge. Additionally, we want our elementary schools to be closer to at least 270 students. And we know that's not a really big school. But when you're looking at a school like Whitman, just hovering about 150 students, again, hundreds of students needing to be shifted. The additional thing that the board continued to give guidance to the SEGC on through the fall was the importance of eliminating or limiting the number of single strands, where you only have one section per grade level, one teacher with no peers, no other classroom for those kids to go in, particularly where you had neighborhood programs and dual-language immersion together. So as you know, like this is a very complicated set of pieces to move and shift. The Coalition has been so diligent, they have worked so hard. They are on their 14th version. Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit more details about number 13. And by the way, we have an amendment to it that they're going to look at on Thursday. Within this, they, what we had them do last week was some informal work sessions and then a full evaluation of the proposal. And we have 29 pages of open-ended responses and tallies to a few questions. So here's the quick, the quick version. They support about two-thirds support the program placements that Karina just described to you with several really important conditions and caveats. About a third, so they did not reach a clear consensus, it's a majority. And about a third are actually not in support of the program placement. Within all of the boundary options that we provided, still trying to really leverage the local knowledge of what would make more walkable boundaries and trying to get neighborhoods programs to better sizes. The one that there's preference for is what we're calling F3. And in that, a key difference from what they had looked at before is that the Woodstock Neighborhood Program would become a feeder to Lane Middle School instead of Hosford Middle School. We also gave them a couple of different ways to achieve better balance between schools, but it would require kids in an elementary school, you know, fifth graders, to move to different middle schools. And they rejected both of those because of the difficulties and challenges associated. What you gained from better enrollment was, I believe, not worth it to many SEGC members. We also asked them about implementation, and we're going to spend more time on that when we get on Thursday. And most members do support allowing students to remain in their current school after the boundary change. So we'd say follow the existing policy on how we phase a boundary change in, in part because of the difficulties being in the pandemic and the lengthy process this has been. So if we go to the next slide. So as I said, draft proposal F3. Here's the middle, approximate middle school numbers. But if we, let's go to the next slide because I think the graphic. Is there one?
There's one before that.
Can you go one back? Yeah, there it is.
There it is.
The little houses that, we've had 14 of these. This will give you sort of those, those words and pictures. As we said, the key middle schools, Harrison Park and Lane, to grow those enrollments above 500 and even closer to 600, and then shifting students from those out, from the other middle schools. But in doing that, you see that we actually have Mount Tabor, Hosford, and Roseway Heights with fewer than 500 students. So that's below the threshold that we hoped for. And acknowledging that those middle schools are adjacent to other schools that may be subject to further enrollment balancing. So for example, we have K8s in northeast Portland that need to go through the conversion process. And they're adjacent to some of these schools that may have lower enrollment as we go through this. The numbers that we're quoting are what we project the 25, 26 enrollment would be if all of the change were 100% in place, kids attended those future schools the way they attend schools now. And the enrollment is as we forecasted to be last spring. That is a lot of ifs. So the number, there is no like magic number, we know that, right? But if some of those ifs don't work out perfectly and some schools might fall below those numbers or get, stay higher than those numbers, I think that the Coalition has been really concerned about those potential implications, especially for Harrison Park, sitting at about 588 with more than 300 new students having to come forward, including students from Atkinson, which is further away, and Chinese immersion, which is now at Hosford. And then also with Kellogg, really holding its enrollment about where it is right now, being up there above 80% of utilization, being close to 700 students, and a concern about the kind of inequality in programming that might emerge from that and could add to inequities that already exist. So those are, that's the big picture. The next slide takes us to our racial equity impact measures. So for each of the proposals, we tried to have a high-level view of key groups that could be impacted by the change. The darkest bars are what would, what the outcome of the proposal would be. And the lighter bars are the current state. And so this illustrates where with our middle schools, we've got 75% of our Black and Native American students in southeast attend the middle school with 500 more students now. And if this proposal was fully in place, only 62.2%. And I can assure you, and you're going to hear from the co-chairs, this isn't an area of delight for the SEGC. To have worked this hard, this diligently, and not have a better result is something that people are really struggling with. However, when you go to the next set of bars, you see that for that same Black and Native American students in southeast schools, only less than 61% are in an elementary school with 270 students now. And with this proposal, it grows to 93.5%. Now, 93.5 at 270 is still a lot of kids in really small schools, but it's a significant improvement from what we see today and what we would see without these changes. The other factors that are maybe hidden underneath the, yeah, are the number of students who would be affected. This is a set of changes that would affect based from where they are now. And we know everyone doesn't have to move. But if everybody moved to make this thing happen, like snap your fingers, everybody go, it's almost 2,000 K8 students in southeast.
Judy, did you do a similar sort of charting out of, on a poverty basis? Because the outer southeast zips are along with North Portland, some of the adjacent neighborhoods.
Yes, the direct certification impact where we apply the current rate of kids. Yes, the direct certification impact where we apply the current rate of kids who receive free meals through direct certification to the new configurations is in the summary statistics for each of these. It is not, and I will say, if you are looking at the absolute latest and greatest, the amendment, F three amended with the final couple little boundary changes, that, um, the team that provides the direct certification is the same team that's doing staffing. So we won't have that till tomorrow. But for everything else we do.
I'm sorry, what, in what document is it?
So if you have these, these summary statistic sheets, it's the bar column here is called loading.
Right, but I, but that's just the currents. I read that as that's what the current state is, not what the.
It's what it would be if all of the today's kids were shifted to the assigned schools.
We don't have a comparison. We just have what it.
Okay. Yeah, the sheets only show what it would be, um, not what it is today, but I can get you, I mean.
Yeah.
Get from that.
I guess.
It sounds like that's your question is, you see what it would be and you want to know what this.
Well, I'm confused because there is a chart that has the neighborhood lent at 58%.
Direct certification?
Yes.
All right.
Is that, you're telling me that's what it would look like after it became all school DLI? And you're assuming the neighborhood kids stayed?
If 100% of the current neighborhood kids stayed in part of the Spanish, all school Spanish DLI and Spanish DLI students from Bridger, Keenan, join the neighborhood students, the total rate for Lent would be 35.3%. 58.6% is the neighborhood students.
What is it currently? That's what you're saying? You don't have it?
And that, well, we have it. It's just not on this chart and I would get that.
But those are, those are theoretical new neighborhood, neighborhood students in DLI because if you're a third grader there now, you're not going to go into DLI.
So another if in this series of complicated proposals is a lot of movement and change in who will attend programs in the future. Since we do not have a detailed plan for how Lent neighborhood students would, um, would phase out, this model assumes they're all still there. It doesn't proportion any of them off to Marysville or other schools. It's for modeling purposes. We don't have that level of detail.
Right, but there's no assumption that they're going to stay there. If it's, I mean, if you're in third grade, you wouldn't have had any Spanish instruction. Are you saying there may happen?
No, but they, they have a right to stay there in an English program until everybody ages out.
Well, is that, is that the case?
Yeah.
We expect the program to phase out, but we don't have a phased approach in this plan. So we didn't, we didn't model 25%, like which 25% of kids are going to stay and which 20, which 50% are going to go.
But we will staff for a neighborhood program until all the students that are currently in that building are, have matriculated. Oh, that's not my understanding.
That's me.
Yeah.
So a detailed plan for, um, progressing the neighborhood strands to nearby school is not part of what you're looking at.
So the, what I just said is currently what it looks like right now, but we still could come up with a plan that might, uh, do something different with those neighborhood Lent students, uh, in the near term.
Cause we won't be enrolling any new kindergartners in this plan. We wouldn't be enrolling neighborhood kindergartners. We continue the progression. Like kindergartners would still be first graders.
So it'd take five years. Well, that's not my understanding.
That was what I was.
So let's, let's let staff respond. So it sounds like we just need a little clarity and maybe we don't have it tonight in terms of how that, that transition will happen.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, we think it's really important, like this is an enormous change for the Lent community. And, um, we, if this change is going to go forward, we want to spend more time with the community to better understand their goals and what we could deliver for them and for how long, um, before. So that's why we didn't come to you tonight and we haven't even gone to SEGC with a, this is the exact year that these brains are going to move and which kids can stay for how long. Keep in mind that all implementation is begin, is expected to start in fall of 2023. So we have an 18 month planning cycle. We want to use as much of that on the front end as possible for these.
So some more operational.
So are we saying we won't let the state a whole school DLI?
We want it to become.
For it to become a whole school DLI.
So that in the future, every student who lives in the Lent neighborhood, regardless of their language, would enter the school as kindergartners and learn in two languages. We would also take in students from other communities that speak Spanish as their native language. And if there's room for some English speakers.
Okay.
And then back to your data question, did you get that answered in terms of just the, the number? And it sounds like we're going to have some comparison data we can provide to them.
Yeah. Well, I think it's pretty important because they have the highest poverty. They appear to be the highest poverty neighborhood program with the greatest impact potentially.
Right. So we'll, we'll follow up with that comparative data. Staff will follow up. Great. Um, I had a, just a quick question about the third crap down the, the utilization. Can you just explain what that, those bars means, the 80% utilization?
Yes, I would be happy to. So we calculate the number of available classrooms. So we extract rooms that would be for our special ed learning center or part, you know, we have a number of classrooms and they get assigned seats to them. So that's the whole capacities. And then we compare the number of students who would be in the program to that capacity. And that gives us like utilization number. The chart shows the percentage of students, um, now who are in K five or middle or K eight schools that are above 80% utilization and what the rate would be in the future. So we want those numbers to be low. At 80%, you have room to spread out and you need to. 80% doesn't mean you're crowded. Um, and so we use that as the bar.
It, it does, but we want, because I was, said that we want the numbers to be low. So we want the number to be below 80%.
We want the percentage of students in schools that are 80% or below to be.
80% or above.
80% or above to be low.
Okay.
We want a low number of kids in, in over credit schools.
And over 80%.
In over.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question probably for Dr. O. So, uh, when we look at this longer phase in, um, allowing kids for our current policy to stay in their school till the highest grade and then situations like we allow the Lent neighborhood students to stay there. Um, how does that affect our staffing numbers and costs? Because we're going to have some bits and pieces of DLI programs, um, spread around until everybody gets unified, which will take a while. Have you guys sort of done an economic analysis of that?
So we haven't done an economic analysis of it, but we do know that we are committed to supporting students in the programs until the program is phased out. Um, what that means is that we might end up holding on to single strands longer than we intend to. Um, our preference would really be to accelerate that phase in out process. Um, and that remains to be seen. That's exactly how that can be done.
So actually, if I can stop, because I think you've got two more slides and I just think we want to hear from the co-chairs as well. And then we're going to open up for more Q and A from the board and discuss them.
So, steps that goes to me. Um, so we have a group of volunteers, of Coalition members that are drafting the Southeast Guiding Coalition recommendation. And so that will, that is being shared with the members. And then they will have a chance to, um, meet on February 17th to finalize their recommendations that they'll be making to be as chief superintendent. And then, um, we will bring forward to the board on March 1st, my recommendation for, for the Southeast in terms of enrollment program balancing. And then on March 15th, we ask you to approve, uh, a recommendation. And the changes will then be implemented as Judy Brennan mentioned in fall of 2023. So that's the timing here. And it's, so it's about a month till we finalize with the board making the final decision. With that, I'd like to introduce Adrielle Person and Beth Kavanaugh, our co-chairs, um, to share some, uh, you know, perspective as, um, parent leaders in the process.
Hello. Um, thank you for having us.
Hi, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, welcome.
I'm Beth Kavanaugh. I'm a parent at Hosford. I have two Hosford Middle School students this year. And, um, I've been involved in this kind of work since Steve, I also sat on that committee. So I've been around this process for a while. Um, I'll go ahead and touch on our first couple of bullet points and then hand it over to Adrielle. So, um, obviously there's no perfect solution to a complex process like this. And, um, the recommendation that will be coming forward as any solution we would have landed on will have trade offs and unresolved issues. So that's one of, some of the things I wanted to highlight tonight. Um, as, as Judy mentioned, there are, we have a little bit less of a strong alignment within Coalition members this time around than we did in phase one. And so, um, there's some, there are some big outlying issues that people are, that several people are still pretty concerned about. So I want to make sure that those are acknowledged and identified. So first of all, uh, this is an enrollment balancing process with the charge of ensuring robust enrollment for Harrison Park and Lane Middle Schools. And this proposal results in a pretty big enrollment imbalance between Kellogg, in which Kellogg has significantly more students than Harrison Park and Lane. Um, and that's pretty difficult through the various solutions that we've seen proposed. Pretty difficult to mitigate with the DLI program placements, um, as they stand. Um, Kellogg loses Preston as a feeder, as a neighborhood feeder and still remains at, uh, 695 students, almost 90% capacity. Harrison Park's enrollment at 588 is above our minimum, but relies on a high capture rate and pretty low attrition from some of the DLI program placement. So as Judy mentioned, there's some, just questions around how that, how that's going to play out in the long term. Um, Kellogg's geographic boundary results in middle school assignments that are further away from any students living in close proximity to Kellogg unless they're in the Spanish DLI program. Obviously, example is the South Tabor neighborhoods, uh, as Atkinson needs to feed to Harrison Park. Proposal and Ed Bridger remains a K eight. Those are the two programs that are immediately surrounding the Kellogg neighborhood. Um, Harrison Park's boundary, I don't know if you've seen a map, but we've got Harrison Park's boundary kind of wrapping around Kellogg in these proposals. Um, in order to make sure that there's enough students feeding to Harrison Park and that Kellogg sits within its own actual boundary. So it's, it's a challenge. Um, Adrielle?
Uh, additionally, um, Lee, we, we know that there are some huge, um, populations of African American and Native families in Harrison Park and Lane. And we just want to make sure that, because we also know that there was not a huge voice in this process from those populations, that we are able to offer equitable, um, programming that students in those spaces that are African American, Native American, and some of the other less heard from, um, cultures are still receiving, um, support, especially in a space where there is shifting in neighborhoods and students moving around, making sure that resources move with them. Um, and then also, also making sure that we are very intentional about staffing. And we know that in the state of Oregon, there's less than 1% African American teachers. We know that that's a huge opportunity, um, and Native American teachers even less. And we want to make sure that when we're making these adjustments, that there are students in neighborhood programs and even dual language, that there are teachers that represent and offer them, um, some cultural, um, connection in these spaces so that these students can, can thrive and feel that sense of community that some of the other students feel in these social justice schools.
Another, um, issue that arises has to do with the scope and probably would have been an unresolved issue in any plan that is put forward. And that's the, the challenge in the K five, outer Southeast middle schools. We've got, you saw on the racial equity, um, impact slide that we've got a lot of students, fewer students in, um, in schools under that 270, but we are, we kind of have all the schools right there on that line at 270. Really maybe just above, just below. We're not talking about, we're like by a handful of students. And, um, it's come up repeatedly, both from Coalition members and from the community at large that it feels, um, it, it's felt like we've been locked into this solution that, that's not solving the problems for our K five elementary schools. Um, particularly when we've got several higher, schools with higher enrollment that are not part of this process. So there's also this concern about if those schools with higher enrollment that are more affluent schools in inner Southeast, if that enrollment is addressed down the line, does that mean we re-impact these K five schools that are currently having their boundaries shifted in order to have, achieve a better balance across the region? Um, so that's, that's a big, a big one that's hanging out there. And, yeah. I had anything else in my notes here?
Thank you, Beth and Adrielle. We really appreciate your leadership throughout this process. You have been, um, stellar examples of, um, parents that are completely involved and leading other parents in, in this process. And, um, your voices are important throughout this process. And while we haven't found, as you spoke, Beth, of the perfect proposal, it, um, we know that one doesn't exist, right? The, the other thing I would say is it's especially hard when we started this process and set our targets. This is before we lost 4,000 students in three years in this district in the pandemic. So that's especially difficult as we're having trouble with meeting targets that were set when we had more students. Especially in our elementary schools, that's felt with our K one and by next year two, um, enrollments have significantly declined, 20% enrollment decline in those lower grade levels. So those are, um, that's impacting this process. I just want to, just like it's impacting staffing, it's impacting this process.
Claire, how much of that 20% drop do we think is folks not coming to schools through the pandemic? And how much of it is because of the decreased birth rate?
You know, I don't know, but we can put our finger on how much is which at this point. But we're using our best thermometers of PSU to help us figure that out.
Well, we can see the delta, I mean, the PSU original enrollment projections took into account declining birth rates. We can see the delta.
So the other thing that, um, Director Combsam reminds me is that we have plenty of room for pre-k. In, in all of our elementary.
You're going to put them in those under enrolled schools.
And I just had a student come back to grout, uh, I did lunch duty there this week who has been homeschooled. Um, and the family finally felt like numbers were dropping enough that they felt comfortable re-enrolling the students. So maybe we'll start to see some families come back. We're hopeful.
So, um, now we're turning it over to Q and A and then to board.
So let's go ahead and structure it like this, if, if, if the board's okay with it. Um, we'll just do a, a round of Q and A if you have any. Don't feel compelled to come up with a question if you don't. But if you have any sort of clarifying questions, data questions, understanding the proposal questions, let's just spend a few minutes on that and then circle back for more of a substantive discussion about, um, you know, where, where you think this is headed in.
Sorry, Master, but we, we do have folks taking notes, uh, online. So if you can actually say your name, uh, when you speak, uh, so we can capture both your, your request and your, uh, your, your comments.
May I just say something really quickly before we get into the question and answer session? I do want to acknowledge that, um, our principals did a lot of work in trying to reach our silent voices. They had, um, influencing meetings, they had virtual meetings. Some of them met with, uh, with their parent community during drop off pickup sessions. So we did a whole lot to try to reach the silent voices as much as possible. I just want to make sure that, um, we went above the deal. We think that's fully deserved.
Yeah. Um, Jack?
Yeah. Uh, my first question is more of a clarification about, so the high schools that the middle schools are going to currently won't be changing at all. Like, in this process, that's a Phase Three process?
Yes.
So then I guess the follow-up question is, how do these changes impact our high school enrollment?
So these changes will, uh, are for the fall, uh, proposals for fall of 2023. We're engaged in a high school system balancing process that would, that will be initiated after this. So please do, until that process is done, which will be across the city, the, the current, uh, patterns remain intact.
Okay, so, like, I went to Hossford Middle School, it'll still feed to Cleveland High School. Harrison Park will go to Franklin or Stan.
It, yes, so I think as we come through at the, at the end of Harrison Park, it is by, it's by current address, right? So is how it is right now. So we have to go back and, uh, we definitely look at it to make sure what sort of it is by address. And I, I think that, I, is Harrison's Park, are, is Harrison Park split primarily?
It, it is not, but when it takes in additional feeder schools and programs, the high school assignment that exists for those programs now will move to the new school and then be addressed.
Okay.
And the same for Lane, it'll continue to be a split.
A more balanced split, that is now, that doesn't make it not a split.
I just wanted to make a comment to staff and Shanice in particular about how robust the community engagement has been in looking through the report, and there are just the multiple ways that you and your team connected with people, like literally by phone, um, and offering translations and cultural translation. I just want to appreciate you in a moment for the work and your, your.
Thank you, Director DePass, and also just echoing, uh, Dr. O, our principals really were my partners as well in making, working that possible and, uh, did a lot of work, um, uh, especially in this, in this time during COVID, being able to access families really requires that, you know, trusted, trusted, trusted folks in the building to make that happen. So, um, I appreciate the team support, um, as well as bring architecture, uh, for, for me.
Haley, did you have a question?
I did, it was about Lane.
Okay.
Uh, I have a question about Bridger and creative science. So how, do we know how that will work in terms of creative science being a choice school? So will we just see how many neighborhood students there are, uh, from the Bridger neighborhood program and from, I guess, Clark, then has a catch, its own catchment, or not, um, do we know, uh, so then they'll just, the leftover, the number of spaces left over will be available through lottery, or?
So will we go through Judy?
Basically like that, just.
Yeah, we're looking at how Buckman and Sunnyside operate now, where the students live in the, in the zone, which would be the new Bridger Zone, slightly smaller than the existing one. Would have guaranteed right to the program, remaining seats would be for a lottery. They'll have to come together and be larger than the ideal size, um, and then phase into that, back to the balance of, uh, essentially two strands per grade level. We also, um, don't really know the proportion of Bridger students who might opt out of the K8 and into comprehensive middle school, something that they were looking forward to for a long time and, um, haven't, uh, sort of really had that opportunity yet.
Then they will all continue, they will all have the right to do that.
They will have the right to do that, absolutely, with Harrison Park. And another reason why that Harrison Park enrollment, that it's another if.
Yeah.
Can you put up there a map of the new Kellogg boundaries for the neighborhood?
Uh, we can, um, I have a paper version of it, right? Well, um, how would you like me to do that?
You can send it to me and I can put, put.
All right. Can you give us a moment?
Yeah, it's on, uh, on my question line, um, so 2,000 students moving. How many of those are actually, um, middle grade students moving? Is that, that seems like an awful, that seems like a lot of students moving in order to fill two middle schools that, but, but not that much and without that big a reduction in Kellogg.
I do not know that proportion, um, by grade level, you can bring that around with you.
It's the program, um, DLI program for both the Mandarin and the Spanish that adds to, um, that movement. I bring you those, um, instead of having two middle school Mandarin programs, we're bringing that into one. Instead of having, um, several Spanish, bringing it into one. So it is, um, the students that live in the attendance boundary as well as, um, program DLI.
How many, um, district-wide, and this is primarily Eastside and Southeast and Northeast, single strand programs do we have in co-located programs?
So maybe these very detailed questions, we could get back to you because we weren't prepared to answer very detailed data questions this time. But we're, we're happy to get you the responses you need and, but in, in terms of, we'll have to look each one of these up, and I'm not sure Beth, we have mentioned that.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
You want to go ahead and put the questions on the table and then staff can get back to you.
Okay, so, that's fine, just, I thought this was the, the work session.
Would you mind repeating that one if I didn't hear all of them, sorry?
How many single strand co-located programs exist? And I, I really, I'm interested explicitly in Lent. I had the same conversation, I had the same, um, so thinking when we did the Rigler Scott, question as well, because we effectively are closing a neighborhood program. And while, um, neighborhood students, if they're at kindergarten, have the right to go and be in the immersion program. Immersion doesn't work for everyone, and also given, um, what we know about the neighborhood, there's lots of movers. So if you move into an apartment building in the Lent neighborhood as a second grader, you couldn't go to Lent.
So I can verbally, uh, express that other than the Southeast programs, we have Dr. Martin, who's a senior Chinese immersion. And we also have two, um, neighborhood-only Spanish immersion in the St. John's area, one at Sitin, one at James John, they serve their neighborhood-only students. And I believe that the rest of the programs across the district are co-located, um, and have two strands.
But my understanding, I meant the English side. I meant, I meant the neighborhood side.
You meant the neighborhood side.
So for example, isn't, isn't Atkinson?
Beach and, uh, on the neighborhood side, it's Beach and Cecil Chavez.
That have a single strand on the neighborhood?
Yes.
So Atkinson has two, two neighborhoods?
Yes. Sorry, I'm, I'm also just trying to get this, um, map to John.
Cecilia, you're kind of, the idea of Lent not having a neighborhood component, it's not something in favor?
Well, it caused me concern because it's a high, just thinking about the, um,
Just, but high poverty.
High poverty, so like what we heard from Harrison Park is really the walkability, like keeping families together. And also having been a parent of three students who started immersion, knowing that immersion doesn't work. Doesn't work for everyone, and so it's just, it's, it's a little bit different, the Sunnyside model, their creative science model, because you can, like, move into the neighborhood and just slot in that third grade at.
But you can't do that in Yale.
But you can't do that in Yale.
It's a bit different, it's, it's, um, Mary's.
Right, but it's not, it's not very close, and it's also another high poverty school. I'm just sort of thinking about the impact.
Right, so, no, it's, it's, it's a fine question. I, I guess maybe going back to the SEGC, I mean, um, well, my understanding of the engagement is that actually there was pretty strong support in the Lent neighborhood for this change.
There's support, there are folks who, you know, don't, don't agree.
No, I, I don't think it'd be unanimous, but it's, it's like for me.
Well, I was wondering if like that was, that was actually a question I was going to ask, whether the support for s- school-wide DLI was more the support from the DLI program versus the, the neighborhood side. I mean, I just, having gone through nine school closures, like, when the Richmond School Program closed or the Brooklyn School Program closed, people who lived across the street and weren't allowed to go to the school felt we, PBS was treating students in a neighborhood differently based on the neighborhood they lived in, because you didn't have a right. Which, in most other parts of the district, if you're in the neighborhood, you have a right to, to attend. So if you live across the street from Bridle Mile or, you know, Pick, um, Lower East or whatever, you have the right to, you're in the boundary to go to that school. That, that's a really good question, um, just if the socio-economic status is considered, was one of the, one of, one of the things that was considered?
I mean, it's a mile from Lent to Marysville is a mile.
Yeah, depending on where you live.
Right, I just, I'm from school to school.
Between the schools, but then the catchment areas, so.
And one, one thing I would say that's good about the neighbor, I mean, Lent is right on 205, right, as we talk about Harriet Tubman.
So are we bringing this up because we're ready to tackle the boundary issue?
Well.
I'm just talking, I mean, do we either need to poop or get off the pot? Are we bringing this up because we're ready to tackle this issue? Or do we want to say, no, this is what we're going to do right now, and then we'll do something later? But we can't keep talking about them both as if, because they're synonymous to one another and not be ready to do something. So are we ready to do it? I'm, or where, where do we go? Because we can't just keep talking all day about, oh, this might hurt somebody's feelings or, or what. But what are we doing?
Well, I'm in favor of.
So actually, just really quick, so that is, thank you for that transition. Let me just make sure that, that there were no more questions, data questions from board members, just because we didn't get around to everybody. I don't, oh, I can, I can, I'm good.
You can nerd out if you need to, but you're not going to, so you're saying.
Andrew was ready to go. I, I, I didn't mean to get you riled up, Andrew.
No, no, because actually, I want, it is 7:05, and I think we should transition.
I didn't get, I didn't get you riled up.
I do have a quick question just about, I'd never heard the fisc to five term and how decisions are made, if someone could talk a little bit about how that was employed. And, and somebody, um, maybe it was Shanice that was talking about that, there's, there was one-third, instead of the fisc to five, that a consensus model was used, a majority in terms of making decisions, so. So, again, just like, wonder which voices were listening to and.
So the fisc was for the Southeast guiding coalition members, the parents and principal representatives. And, um, I'm just making sure that Karina Ruiz is not still on the, she's not, okay. And so, starting with zero means that I absolutely not support this proposal.
Okay, zero, zero, right?
And then five, okay.
And five means I absolutely will be the, the person that's running the charge to make this happen.
Okay.
Okay, and then, oh, so zero to two, there's not a lot of support, but three to five, just support.
Support with caveats or, okay, so then.
Sorry, can you all talk one at a time? I'm sorry, I'm getting texts from the note takers, that they, they're, there are too many people talking. So one at a time, please, sorry, I didn't.
Not at all, and it's Michelle DePass, sorry, I forgot to state my name. Yeah, I was curious about the decision-making and, and how you got to that consensus model.
Can I ask a related question? This is Andrew Scott. The one-third not in support, um, similar, I mean, you raised some, some really legitimate, you know, downsides, no, no proposal's perfect. Is that where most of those one-third, they just thought those were enough to sort of not support the overall proposal? Did they have other concerns? And, and I guess my other question is, were there other alternatives that they would have supported that were, that were different?
Yeah, um, my name, Beth Kavanaugh is my name, and the, um, there was two proposals that were brought forth. One, the, about the program placements, so one that had, that's coming to you, that's got Spanish at Kellogg and Mandarin at Harrison Park. The alternative had, uh, Spanish at Harrison Park and, um, Mandarin at Kellogg. And, um, so the majority of the people who are not in support of the current program feel that there would have been a, a more sustainable, long-term solution with, uh, Spanish, which is the larger DLI program, at Harrison Park, which is the larger building with less neighborhood, um, residents. So, uh, now that proposal, we have not, weren't able to, like, flesh out to the degree that the, the proposal that the majority of the coalition supported. So there have been multiple iterations of that one. And in, in terms of the consensus, this was a process piece that, now, I'm going to speak for myself for a minute, that, um, that was a little tricky, where we had a fisc to five, would you move forward with this, would you look closer at this? Which we did, and we had sort of a, a vote that went back and forth, where we had 60% in favor of Spanish at Kellogg, and then we looked at what that looked like, what that, what the proposal would mean for enrollment balancing, for neighborhood feeder assignments, all those things. The end of that meeting, we took a second quick poll on program placements and had a flip that was 60% in support of Spanish at Harrison Park, but we never really dug into that. And then all the proposals that came forth after that were, had Spanish at Kellogg. So then, when we did the vote, it was, um, can you support Spanish at Kellogg? Not a choice between two alternatives.
Thank you. So let's go ahead and transition, and I, and I think this, this discussion so far highlights, I mean, what, what you said during the presentation, there, there is no perfect proposal. There are proposals that meet most of, of, of what the board set out as our goals and with the Southeast guiding coalition, you know, sort of the values that they brought to it. Um, as we go into this discussion, I, I think the key questions that were up on the slide earlier, but they're easy, I'll just repeat them. What does the board need to prepare for the final SEGC recommendation? And what advice do we have, if any, for the Southeast guiding coalition as they finalize their proposals? And, and really, I, this was not sort of stated by staff, but I think some of this is also, you know, what do we need right now in order to, to, to be able to support the proposals that go to work? Are there caveats, questions, things that we are sort of, you know, from a board perspective, like, oh, you have to answer this question for me, would be really useful to get on the table? Because as Claire said, this is a pretty quick timeline, pretty to adopt this by March. And the other thing, having been through the, you know, the first time for me during, during Phase One, now that this proposal is out, we are going to hear from a lot of voices in the community. And that's not a bad thing. I encourage anyone who has got a voice to, to, to read. I, I spent literally hours in Phase One, just sort of reading through these incredibly thoughtful emails. But in the end, we also, I think, and I'll just speak for myself, have to respect the work that the Southeast guiding coalition has done. I mean, I don't know how many hours, I mean, dozens of hours, right? You know, spent. You know, doing this and getting this to the store.
Including everyone at this table.
And it gets really easy to focus in on, on a particular point that maybe isn't perfect, but I think it's also useful to take that step back and say, okay, but are we achieving, you know, the, the, the majority of what we want to achieve? So with that, as a cap, I may roll this open up for discussion.
For me.
Green, do you want to take us home?
I, I would say that I am in, um, support of whole school DLI. I would, uh, I would support keeping, um, Spanish at Kellogg. And, um, I, I think we need to figure out how to increase the enrollment. I feel like that's something that y'all can do. I say y'all, because I'm not doing it. It's not going to be something that I do or think about, more outside of making the statement that I feel like that y'all can do it. And so that y'all becomes y'all. But I feel like that, that would be, I mean, but as a whole, just looking at what I have in front of me, um, that's fine.
Can I just say, on the, the low enrollment is, it's sort of interesting to me, I mean, one of, I think I'm right about this, Claire, one of the board directions was not to close the school. And so, you know, that, you know, and, and I support that, to be clear, because, you know, that, that, that can be very disruptive, but, but really looking at these numbers, you know, had the board said, close the school, we would have had higher enrollment in some of those K5s. And so, a- and the rea-, one of the reasons I actually, I'm, I'm okay with where we are on that is because I, I don't trust all these projections, and that's not a slam on PSU. They are experts and they know way more about demographics than I do, but things change very quickly, and you have thousands of, of individual decisions being made. And I just, you know, I remember when they closed Smith, when I was, you know, younger, and the neighborhood freaked out, and, and the district said, absolutely, we need to close it in five or six years. And five or six years later, they were sort of regretting because there was just a changeover in that neighborhood and, and needing that school. These four thousand students that, that are gone, some of them are gonna come back, and we don't know how many. And I, for me, like, like, I, I like this because it allows us a little bit of time. Four or five years from now, we're in the same place and these, these enrollments of these elementary schools, K fives are two seventy or dropping. We gotta make, maybe go back and make some hard decisions about closing the school, but it could also turn around a little bit and things could change.
And I believe that the staff that we have in place, that they are very capable of figuring out how we can, how we can do that. Cause I, I wouldn't wanna see a school close, uh, a school close either. And so that's why, I think that's why I would, I would say like, let them figure out how to get those numbers. Because when we start doing well in our schools and we start offering, uh, you know, that regular, um, education that we're gonna be offering and we start making more things available, then the schools, all of our schools are just gonna start to look a lot more attractive. And we're not gonna have these issues of, I wanna go here, I wanna go there, because all our schools look sexy. And so that's where I'm trying to get us to.
The other thing I'll say about enrollment, and, and, and I know this is, I'll just say this, I still may not fully understand these, but it seems to me the whole idea of, of enrollment, I understand why enrollment drives program choices, right? Because, you know, money follows student. There is discretion we have though, as a board and as a district, to, to, to make adjustments to that. We have been, the superintendent has been directing tons more resources to schools, you know, our Title I schools and C S I, C S I schools, which is great. And, you know, and, and, and we can make the decision that even in these lower middle schools, to say, we are going to make sure that there is equitable programming across these schools. And, and that's something that I, you know, if, you know, if we support this, this proposal moving forward, I might not even, I might even say that maybe the board should make a formal statement to that. I can't get to that, to the, it says for the next, you know, five years, we want to ensure equitable programming, even if it means that we are, you know, and, and it's a zero-sum game. That means taking resources from somewhere else in the district, but saying we're gonna ensure that that's happening. And I think that's a way of dealing with some of these, as you pointed out, the differential.
Comments. Um, and I did, I think I attended almost all of the Southeast guiding coalition meetings, so, um, so I asked a lot of these, but, sure, listen to most of the conversation and actually, that's, that's, but, um, I mean, for sure, I wanna know what the plan is, um, for if Lent went to a D L I program. Cause I can't imagine any other school community that we would say, you're gonna be fundamentally changed, but we're gonna figure out later what the operating plan is. Um, and so to me, like, I need to know what that is, because if you leave them there, like, what are you doing with the Bridger Spanish immersion programs? Um, are you putting them, everybody there at one school? So I would need to know what the plan is beforehand and how it's been, how it's been collaboratively worked through with the neighborhood program. Um, also, I, I'm looking at, so I, I'd need to have a logic model on the map on page two that was sent, that is the Kellogg. I'm sorry, it's the Harrison Park map, and like, literally, we have school communities driving past Kellogg and going another, you know, at the two mile, like usually drive by Kellogg to go to Harrison Park. Um, it's a very gerrymandered map. Yeah, Atkinson, and there's like a little teeny cherry stem, it almost looks like a cherry stem annexation. Um, so I'm trying to figure out the, the logical model of, of that, because if I were, you know, living at fifty thirty, you know, blocks away from Kellogg, and that's like drive past that to go and across eighty second, um, go there. So more information on why, why we do that, because it doesn't, doesn't seem like it makes sense. And. That's also the how it is that we would support, because I was looking at sort of the impacts. And I'm, I'm really happy for Alita and Lent and Marysville, um, for them having a feeder into, into Kellogg. I think that's super important, and I'm glad to see that happened for those school communities. Um, one of the things we talked about in the bond was that there would be capital money to make Harrison Park an attractive option. And I haven't heard any discussion about that during the whole process, um, because the theory is, is like, hey, there's this great, brand new, really cool school you're gonna go to, but instead, we're gonna move you to this other school. And so we deliberately talked about in the bond, putting money in to do things that would make Harrison Park, it's never gonna be a brand new school like Kellogg, but something, so I feel like that's, that's missing from this, sort of like, hey, we made the decision and we'll make it better later. Versus like, what does, what does that look like? So I'd wanna know more about the district's commitment to, to improve Harrison Park as a, as a middle school, like again, to make it attractive. Um. And I'm still just trying to wrap my head around just like, I wanna look at those enrollment numbers, because it seems like the biggest impact is on the highest poverty sector. The biggest change.
Um, I wanna say I really appreciate what, um, Beth and Judy, what you said about working with the Lent community to sort of think about what the timeline would be to, how we transition the neighborhood piece. Um, and I think it'll, it'll need to happen sooner rather than later, just because of, like Julia said, the numbers at the Bridger coming in. But I, I love that idea of how do we talk to that community and really get a plan? Um, I do think, you know, you mentioned Beth, that it was like, this whole like around Kellogg kind of thing. And I think, you know, this is one of the issues we have, that we don't get to just, we're dealing with this right now as we look at relocating happen. We don't get to be like, here is where we want a school. Here is where we want a school that holds this many students. Like, we're living in to an infrastructure that's already been built and is trying to do our best. And yes, it's hard when people have to drive by a school, especially a brand new shiny one, but it's really trying to say, what is, I feel like what South, what I've heard in the Southeast guiding coalition meetings that I've attended, is this deep sense of like, what is the best we can do given the factors we have? And this appreciation of, yes, there are things that are difficult, and this understanding of, we wanna keep cohorts together, we wanna try to like keep neighborhoods together. Um, and to follow those board things that have been set out. And then I do remember, we've talked about that, the work that'll have to happen to Harrison Park, not just to make it pretty, but also to transition it to a middle school, right? That it's gonna K eight, and that there is money in the bond to help that happen. And I think sometimes in this work, we, we're focused on this, this part of it and not that part that'll come next, which is helping transition Harrison Park. It's that beautiful middle school that'll serve those students. But I really appreciate the work. I see and hear questions I've asked, like about Lewis and some of the catchment area there, and questions I've seen in emails. So I really appreciate the responsiveness of the, the staff and of the volunteers, um, uh, on the guiding coalition to continue to listen and work with all the community engagement subnees and really try to, again, there is no perfect plan, and we're not gonna make people happy, but to really try to do what's best for our students in the long run. And I think, you know, we can't predict always the future, Andrew, like you said about the threat about Smith, but trying, given the data we have, the factors we know about, really trying to make what's best for students, and I really feel like this plan does that. So just thank you so much.
Yeah, I just wanted to start off by saying like a thank you to all the Southeast guiding coalition members. I participated in phase one and it was overwhelming, just the meetings, um, the materials going through, the depth conversations that you had to, had at every single meeting. It takes a lot of time and energy from every single person, especially the staff members who have to prepare for it. Um, so thank you for all of that. Um, I honestly don't think I have any questions. Um, you guys have obviously been engaged with this for years, and I trust you guys to come forward with the best proposal that has the support from the community. Um, yeah, and then as far as the racial equity impacts, I think the concern around, um, the percentage of students that are at over five hundred enrollment seems significantly worse, but we are so close to five hundred at two of the schools, that it might be slightly misleading. Uh, just because we are literally like twenty-one students or forty-four students away from reaching that five hundred, that I don't, it's not as drastic of a difference that we had prior, where it was like three hundred students and it was a two hundred student difference to get to that five hundred. So I'm honestly really happy with the numbers that we came to, even if the percentage that we're tracking down is lower. I think overall, we did seem to be better than what we have. Yeah, so, thank you.
Do we have any plans for, um, offering, uh, transportation? We heard from some families that they were concerned about crossing a busy transportation corridors, specifically at eighty-second division. Do we have any partnering opportunities with P V O T or any ways to address, um, parents, you know, justify where you hear some of their kids crossing eighty-second?
Ninety-second, two oh five.
Ninety-second, two, yeah, it's just speeding, speedy bill out there. So any busing options or, uh, safe routes to school partnerships?
Yes, so we've been working with both our transportation department and, um, our routing manager for attending meetings and answering questions and taking even the input. And there are, Southeast guiding coalition will, um, make some recommendations for transportation as part of their proposal, um, in, in interest of, um, which is being responsive to the concerns raised by the community, and, uh, that will be brought forward as part of the proposal to, um, support. Thank you.
Actually, I might have had one thing that I was not, like completely happy about. Um, I'm like super against like feeder patterns at, uh, elementary and middle school levels. I think in general, those are horrible, you're creating communities in elementary and middle schools only to have them spread, um, at the next grade band. Um, I understand why we need it, I just think it's really hard for that to.
And in this program, all the elementary people go together to middle school, right?
Not in college.
Not in the co-located.
Not in the co-located, that's the one. But this, the neighborhood strand will all go to one and the D L I will all go to another. I'm hoping we fix that in phase three, the split feeder pattern.
Yes.
From middle school to high school.
Director Hollins, did you?
Thanks, Margaret.
Gary, did you have questions or comments?
Uh, not too much from everyone that has asked for it. Um, I just, a couple things, just, uh, Lane and Harrison Park, I'd like to see, um, how we're planning on, um, increasing what the role of the coalition. And, um, also I wanna, when I look at the next step piece, and, and that S E G C, uh, recommends, uh, should the W B S be attended? Are we gonna see that report as well? Or are we just gonna see them?
I'll be happy to share it with those, with all of you.
That's it, thank you.
I did have one more, um, sort of Beth and Adrian, getting back to, um, concerns about these schools being impacted again by future boundary changes. And I, could you, I hear that concern. At the same time, I sort of looked at it almost a, a different way, which is that we have a little bit of low enrollment, but if we do other boundary changes, we can change some of those boundaries and increase that. So almost like it's, it's, we, not seeing, not seeing these enrollment and boundary changes as static, like, oh, we're doing this and we're done. But beginning to get a little bit more of a culture of like, as a district, maybe we should be doing these types of smaller adjustments more regularly. Yeah, don't wanna send shippers down, anyone's fine, but like, you know, can we make it a little bit more routine in the district? So that even though people are being impacted, they sort of understand it. And I've heard, and, and this is super narrow, I don't know if this is true or not, that districts like Beaverton actually do pretty frequent boundary changes, and it just is not quite as, as, as much of an issue, um, in that district. So anyway, I'm getting back to, I just wanted to hear a little bit more, your concerns about those schools being impacted. Could that impact also be positive?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, in the kind of system that you're talking about, that, um, that's definitely, that would lessen that kind of impact. I think for me and for some of the concerns that we're looking at, the, the, the solution of closing a school has come up, both from community and, and guiding coalition members and seeing these over-enrolled schools, or not over-enrolled now, but more robustly enrolled schools in inner southeast, um, not impacted. And then the trade-off of that being, well, we didn't include these schools in the process, and so now we're gonna have to close one of these outer southeast schools feels incredibly inapplicable. So that was a big piece of that concern. Um, but also in terms of just the scope of it, because we've got, you know, how many schools are along this corridor, you know, four or five, three of which are, you know, in that four, well over four hundred students, or five of them are. Whereas we have no, no schools over four hundred students in the entire southeast, outer southeast area that we worked with in the neighborhood programs. So, um, so it seems like it would be more than those minor adjustments. If we were to do a shift that incorporated the whole region, it would be like another great big change. Because to get, you know, the, the five hundred students at Dunaway or at Abernathy shifted so that there were three hundred and fifty at Abernathy, and you have to domino that all the way out to make sure that Lent had an average, Marysville had an average, it would be a, a great big process to get there, it feels like.
Well, I, I wanna, um, kind of go on to something that you said, and that's our residential real estate market is very, very dynamic. And Portland used to be a city that had fewer than, it was quite a low percentage of rentals. Renters on average make about half of what homeowners, you know, median income was. And so it seems like if we're gonna do an equitable distribution, that we maybe should consider more frequent, we need to take into consideration the, the, the dynamics of the, of the real estate market, and particularly how people that are poor, um, are facing displacement for different reasons. And so we're moving further east.
Yeah, I think I was gonna say that too, Commissioner DePass, like those shifts, if they're more frequent, we just have to be more aware of what's gonna happen to the lower, um, socioeconomic families. Like, they're already moving out east, there's already, um, a shift with gentrification. Um, and so we just have to be mindful of those things, um, and then the experiences of the students. Because, you know, at like, you know, Bridger where there might be twenty-eight students of African-American descent and five Native American, if that goes lower, what is that experience gonna be for that student or that community? What, how are you going to get teachers or programs into those spaces to give representation? So you have to be mindful of when you make those shakeups, what they're gonna do to the already sort of historically underserved and underrepresented, um, communities that are in those spaces that are already suffering because of natural or maybe unnatural changes in the, the communities and society as a whole.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, the mobility, um, for people that are living in poverty, um, and, and renters in particular.
If, if you don't mind, I, I would just like to offer that, um, what you're describing is a very reasonable system that other large districts are able to achieve. But it's very hard to do it at the same time as you're also making big structural changes, like deciding whether you're K fives, K eights, some mix, and making these big, major program loads. So I would offer that, let's get the high schools set, let's figure out our K fives and middle schools, get our programs. And, and maybe programs need to be a little more portable, some of these kind of moved in twenty-some years. But in that environment, being strategic with a boundary change that, where you can see it coming and you can take care of it in smaller ways is, is probably a lot more.
But you get such an excellent point about the program changes and other large things, you know, happening, that, that, if that's it.
I have two, two things. One, um, my recollection from the last Southeast guiding coalition, what is, is actually was one-third support, one-third oppose, and one-third with major caveats, and I'd like to understand that middle group better. Um, that's one thing. And then the other thing, and this is just a bigger overarching piece that, on sound like spoken record, that the, the number of, um, programs in parts of East Portland totally make it a different district than other parts of the, of the school district. And it seems before we embark on the, the high school experience, it's sort of like, hey, we've got an opening here. Well, and most of the openings are in, on the east side and a lot in southeast is, before we get to the high schools, like what is our general philosophy about neighborhood programs? Cause it really depends on where you, where you live in the city. And it, it, it's not that one is. Right or wrong, it's just there are different rules of scenes for different parts of the city. And it's like, you have a right to attend a neighborhood school, except for if you live in southeastern. So I. I just think that's something we should grapple with it before we make more. More changes.
Can I just add a caveat, I, I wanna be a little careful when we say right to attend a neighborhood school. You're talking about the, the current neighborhood. They still will have a right to attend a different neighborhood school, and, and, and it is further away, so I think we need to take that into account. But it's, I just wanna be clear, I mean, right now, as an example, East Sylvan is a focus option program. A child living next to East Sylvan does not get a go-to that focus option program, that child goes to a different elementary school, which is their neighborhood elementary school. So it's, what we're doing is we're changing the neighborhood elementary school, that they still have a right to go.
Actually, it was only East Sylvan for about. Four year, I mean, it was the German-American school, but.
I'm just saying there's a school there, that a child who lives a block away does not get a go-to.
That's the only one I think, though. On the east side. And that, well, I know, it's your East, East Sylvan.
I would use that just as an example, that Marysville will become the neighborhood program, the neighborhood school for, for, for students in that neighborhood who don't wanna go. So it's not that we're taking away the right to go to a neighborhood program, we're just switching the school.
We're actually making. Schools, a whole school program that is open to a different population than just the neighborhood.
It's not true, like DaVinci or Winter Haven or some of our other focus option schools, that we have schools where there isn't a neighborhood program. So, Beth, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, just that those, those programs, like, like the one at East Sylvan, they are concentrated in southeast Portland. When you look at where they're located in the map, there are more of those. Schools where you might live across the street, but you are, your assigned neighborhood school is elsewhere in southeast than in other regions.
But there are other schools that are not neighborhood programs in our schools in southeast.
Totally, well, that's what I'm saying, like Winter Haven, I was on the board when we closed Brooklyn, and the people who said, I went to the Brooklyn Neighborhood School. And you're closing the school I live across from, and unless I lottery in to Winter Haven. I don't, I've gotta go to. Further away neighborhood school.
Yeah, and I think, again, that's the reality of the dynamic city we live in, that. We, we maybe aren't able to run neighborhood programs and keep all of our schools at full enrollment, so then we create these focus option programs. I mean, I think it's a fundamental question about the nature of our district, and how, I think it's important to have the focus option schools, because there are students who that's important for, and then. But we can't have both, co-located all the time, so I think that's the fundament, the fundamental question we have.
I, I totally appreciate focus option, I had two thirds of my kids in focus option, what I'm just saying is, they are concentrated in east Portland. And. And so it leads to a different dynamic.
Yes.
And, and which, a little bit of it is like, you, you could be, you could be moving a lot. Then if you were in a, you know, likely that maybe your boundary, if you were between. You know, Maplewood and Haynesworth, your boundary would be changed, other than a good example, part of Mile and Maplewood, like it hasn't changed in fifty years. But if you're in southeast, things have been changing all the time for the last twenty-five years. I mean, there are people who've gone from one closed school to the next, well, I was, so you have to.
And, and so I think that dynamic is true, and I guess the question is though. And, and where do we go with that?
Well, I think we should be, be thoughtful about how our program placement. You know, it's like a fairness to like people on the west side, it's like, hey, you know. In your neighborhoods, there aren't any of those programs. I mean, there are very few, there's Odyssey and the Haynesworth Spanish immersion program. And. I'd say, I, I live this every day from people like, hey, our schools are being closed and moved around, and the boundaries changed, and like. I mean, it's ironic that CSS is now going back to Bridger, because in two thousand, they were being kicked out of Bridger because it wasn't working. So now it's like full circle back to them.
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree, I mean, I think the dynamic you're describing is accurate. I think what I've seen from Southeast Guiding Coalition is, given that dynamic, they've come up with a proposal that. And it gets to most of what we asked them to do, and does it pretty well, so, so I don't disagree with you.
This is a bigger overarching thing, like questions.
Sort of a twenty-year's plan, how do we begin to turn the boundary change, right?
Are we, because I've heard Director Hollins say, like, we should get rid of all the boundaries.
I'll support that.
Well, doesn't San Francisco, everybody, superintendent? Doesn't San Francisco have, you get assigned a school? So you may have two kids, there's a lottery, so you may have two kids going to two separate schools across the city.
This discussion today.
Isn't that what happened with your students, they were at two different schools?
But we're not proposing that for PDS.
No, no, we are not. So what I'm saying is, there are, there are other schools that do, other districts should do things differently, and I agree with you, Julia, that this is a hard dynamic in southeast. I hear, you know, I have a lot of folks in the same sort of neighborhoods, and that I'm in a relationship with, and I think. Again, it's one of those hard parts about living in a dynamic-changing city where we're trying to adjust. Boundaries and do the best for all kids possible, and there are gonna be some people who are not gonna be able to go to the school across the street from their house, and that, that's hard for that family, and I think the. The beginning of our presentation today, there was acknowledgement that this is gonna be difficult for families. There are gonna be some people who this is a challenge for, and part of what we're saying is, we're gonna work with those families and communities to help in this transition. But that, at the end of the day, like, what is best for the most amount of students in this moment, to live into our values of rigorous academic programs. Social justice, original equity, and, and I think you're right, so the question then is, when we begin to start, if we start a new focus option school, it should be on the website.
I have actually one question, so, so for, for, I think Judy might be the first one. Or, sorry, Ms. Brennan, the best, if we are focusing on southeast and we're consolidating the DLI programs. Does that limit our ability to keep consolidating in northern northeast? Though you said that King School was single strand, so it would not be able to be consolidated by.
I think that we're gonna want to take a look at that as part of our high school work, and then work back down. I think that the programs that are most likely for consolidation are where you have multiple. Instances of the same language that are somewhat near each other. So we had three Spanish immersions in southeast at the elementary level, we'll go down to two. We would have had two, we had two middle schools, and we'll go down to one. We can't do that everywhere, but I know that we've got some single strand and other issues across north and northeast in particular. And we will be, be looking.
We will be addressing those needs as well, the other thing that I do want to add is that. We really did prioritize student achievement and supports for families in this whole process. We also took a really close look at what schools could be neighborhood schools that would still remain within the capability that our parents stressed. And what we then tried to do is recognize on which ones were closest. We tried to make sure that at least the families do that, and they have the option if they wanted to vote there. So if you can't vote with a DLI, that's why in your neighborhood, there's a neighborhood school that you could belong to. It did work perfectly in every scenario, but we did our best trying to. I just wanna say that, so you know that we did think along those lines, trying to make sure that.
But all the kids from Atkinson, the neighborhood program, will have to take a bus to Harrison Park. Because the distance.
At least, I would say about half. The first half, and, and we unfortunately know this, because it's part of the Bridger area now, that Kellogg is in the Bridger boundary, and those kids have rights, some of them to Harrison Park. So we've had to, the transportation team has, has already had to experience what that transportation would look like. And I think about half of that new part of Atkinson, not the existing part, it'll be new to Atkinson. Would be within a mile and a half. And then there's other parts that are farther, farther away, there's no question.
And I also think Atkinson has a lot of kids that are coming from other areas into the school, and we also.
Well, not in their neighborhood.
Not in the neighborhood.
I think the challenge has been, if not Atkinson, then. And really. Looking at the next closest community being Marysville, being a community that serves many more students of color. Immigrant families, many languages spoken in that school. And I'm not wanting to displace another community like that, and that's not to say that we've achieved perfection, especially with Lynn. The other part is that if Marysville becomes a hub for Lynn students who move into the neighborhood and don't. Move into immersion, we wouldn't want those kids then split to a different middle school. Like, so the, the split wouldn't just be where you go for, and, and I also think that's been really important. There are two hundred and seventy-one resident K five students who live in the Lynn neighborhood, that's all. With keeping Harrison Park and supporting the schools around them, to get that, that enrollment to be robust enough, to be large enough, to. Offer those kids a program that we really want is a huge struggle. This is not perfect, but the kids who would opt out of Lynn or be assigned out into Marysville will have a more robust. Whole neighborhood experience than what we might be able to provide from them in Lynn, it's going to require transportation. And we would want them to meet up at middle school if possible, which is another reason why we come back to this. Why Atkinson, sorry, that was more than.
No, that was super helpful, is the two hundred and seventy-one the number of students or the number they've captured?
That is, well, that is the enrolled Portland Public School students K five, I don't know.
That, that, I thought you said just kindergarten, wow.
Two hundred and seventy-one resident K five students in the Lynn county.
I'm sorry, I'm just, this is a nuance, but that's how many are in the boundaries, or that's how many are attending the neighborhood program at.
That's how many attend all Portland Public Schools. Two-thirds of them, about a hundred and sixty, attend Lynn's.
So this is like a king, the neighborhood, the boundary is so small, even if there wasn't DLI there, you put, there's not enough. So their capture is a hundred and sixty-one. In the neighborhood program.
And, and the immersion program, both, yeah.
Okay, so, has staff gotten what you need from the board?
I, I have some data requests that we're, make sure that we get some of them during the process, but also some very specific answers that we'll make sure we get to. And so, yes, if you've responded to our questions, and the Southeast Guiding Coalition will finalize their recommendation this Thursday. And the draft recommendation, of course, will still have some probably editing that will make sure that we're running past members as we're finalizing. So, last version, and that's again done by a volunteer group. You know, working with supports from staff that understand, you know, making sure it's all fitting into what we can do, so. So that, look forward to that. Probably, would you say another ten days out?
Yeah, the writing team met today, and they felt it was likely that they just had their finish results. Within a week.
I'm supposed to be at that meeting, but I'll be late, so we're not the first third or so. Appreciate, board member.
Great, so you'll follow up on specific questions tonight to the whole board, the Southeast Guiding Coalition woman. I did also hear a desire, once that report is done, and to you to just share that with the board, and then I think, and I think that's also helpful, then. WSB superintendent, if, if your final recommendation to us, you can also explain if, if there were any changes. For us to support, members to be useful to the public as well, sort of. Thank you, everybody, for the time tonight.
Thank you all for getting together.